What are the chances that?
She just started recording.
Did you talk to the young lady? Talk to the girl?
Melissa had breakfast.
Yeah.
You made it up?
Yep.
I don't know if they realize you're. But we had a good breakfast.
Hey, girls.
Hi.
We only did.
Wow.
Yeah, we only have, sorry, Kayla's bucket. She didn't make way on my back floor. Yeah. Yeah, that's all good.
Call the meeting to order. First thing that we're gonna do tonight is recognize the girls varsity basketball team. The North American School Board would like to recognize the hard work and accomplishments of the Ladyman event basket varsity basketball team. We're proud of the players and their coaches for coming to PBC, nor the main champions, and reaching the state finals for the first time in 27 years. Individual players received numerous rewards and the entire team represented the school. Their and their community with sportsmanship, integrity, and talent. Congratulations, ladies.
We'll also recognize the coaches. We have head coach Nick Cullen. We can introduce you.
Okay, we have Allison Alley. Okay, I'm so sorry, my other two coaches first. Three coaches, Chrissy Tapley, Mike Brown, and Emma Alley.
All right.
Spread players Allison Alley. Come on up, big Al. All with us today on our way back to Florida, the Kayla Anderson. Casey Kenyon.
And yeah. You're welcome.
Kelly Farver. Kennedy Emerson. Rhiannon Gardner. Brady Gersa. Grayson Sanders. Kylo Welch. And Skylar Wilson. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming, ladies. Thank you, coaches.
Thank you.
Any adjustments? Seeing none. Public comment. The school board endorses the concept that community participation in the affairs of the school is essential to improve the quality of education for its students. To be eligible to address the board, an individual should reside within the school unit, be an employee of the school unit, or be invited by the school board or the superintendent to speak. The board shall give due attention to comments and contributions from the audience, but shall not be expected to respond or take action immediately. Audience inquiries other than simple questions shall be referred to the superintendent, who shall investigate or consider the matter and report to the citizen and to the board. If board action is indicated, the team may be included in the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Any public comment tonight? I see a hand up. I also need to see a face, please. Sandra? Okay, Rebecca. Go ahead. You're on mute, Rebecca. You're muted.
Okay, as I said to you in the email that I sent you, I am not very computer savvy. I asked if the chat could be enabled so that the public can participate through that method. You did email me back, Mr. Stewart, and say that you would look into it. I wondered if that has been looked at, or if I have to request an agenda and be put on the agenda, or what?
Yeah, I can provide some background information. So when the school board switched to virtual Zoom meetings back at the start of COVID, they set the expectation that the person's name and their picture needed to be up to speak, which the chat does not permit them to do so. So that was the reason that the chat was disabled.
Um. Okay, doesn't seem like a very public friendly then to me, that because you are unable to see my face, that I can't participate in that way. When will the meetings be open to the public?
That's actually an agenda item for later this afternoon, today's meeting, so that discussion's gonna occur shortly.
Okay, very good. You will see me in person then. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca, go ahead.
Hi. I was coming, and I've been coming to the board meetings for some time now, but the problem is, I never, I see the agendas, but I never really know like what the topic is actually gonna be, because well, just because it's, there's a, seems to be a lack of transparency there. But when I was looking at it today, there were a couple of things that jumped out at me. And the first thing was the going back to live meetings, and I'm happy that you guys are wanting to do that. It sounds like there's some community support for that. But I would also like to put a word in that it's nice to have the Zoom, because even though I work from home and I'm just around the corner from where you guys are, I do client calls and I can block off an hour, hop on here, and then go back to work without having to leave. So I would like to say that it'd be nice if we kept the Zoom in addition to live. And if we did go 100% to live, it would be great if you would revisit something from the last meeting, which was going later in the evening, so that way people who work have more freedom to participate. But the two things that jumped out at me were the YouTube thing. There are some times that I just can't be here, and it would be really great if, like particularly committee meetings, I've never been able to find the minutes from any of those. Or, and I feel like I could be more prepared for school board meetings if I could find the minutes from the committee meetings, but if you recorded those and recorded these and put them up on YouTube, so that way people who have, you know, as we all have busy lives, but you know, people could see them and feel more informed about what's going on. I really love that idea. And what led me to all of that was the thing about the curriculum committee. I was shocked that there isn't a curriculum committee, and that's what made me think about committees in general. And the fact that as a member of the public, I feel like I could be more informed if I could find minutes or recordings of the committee meetings, because then I would know what the, what the thinking is for the items on the agenda, if I could know what the discussion was, at least the minutes in advance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Dustin?
Hello. I just wanted to, just wanted to address one of the comments that was just made about YouTube, you know, having the videos posted. I think that's a great idea. It's, it's something that the town and the town council has already started doing. And I would like to, you know, put it out there that there is an open invitation from the town council to use their YouTube site and allow them to post the videos of the school, the school board meetings. Just, it really makes sense just from a perspective of, hey, we're all one town. It'd be great for somebody to have one place to go where they can watch both the town council meetings and the school board meetings in the same place. So something I'd like the board to consider if they're able to.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Hi, I'm gonna try to be quick because I'm zooming from work, because I work until 5 o'clock. I just, I want to echo, yes, I think YouTube is a great thing. I think that just eliminating a barrier of if people can't be here, them being able to, to see what people are talking about, what's being discussed at school board meetings on that YouTube page kind of is a no-brainer. Curriculum committee, same thing. I think that it makes sense for us to have that. And again, just going to reiterate that we're the only school board in our area that is meeting at 4:30, so maybe we can take a look at that again, because I'm at work right now. And I'm not the only one. There are people who are not here. Just like Easter Sunday, everybody goes to church. There's a school board meeting and we're talking about a hot topic. Everybody's gonna come. But on a normal, typical day, you have the crew that's gonna be there, the people that want to help and be informed and participate. It almost kind of feels intentional to work against those people, make it more difficult for them to be able to be there. So I would just urge you to maybe bring that up again in the future. I did ask in an email, I only got responses from two school board members, and the people who didn't respond are the people who voted against it, so maybe it got lost in your inbox or something, but just, just putting that out there. Thank you.
Are you, Stephanie? Susan?
I really just wanted to echo all the comments that have been made so far and be counted as in full agreement with everything that's been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alice?
Hello, Alice Hartley, employee of the school. I just wanted to make mention, I've probably been attending board meetings for 20 something years now. The time has been changed from 4:30 to 5:30 to 6:00 many, many times over the years. I've gone to board meetings at 6 o'clock at night, and I don't see where the attendance changed. You know, there's probably, you know, different people wanting to attend today. I don't know, but I mean, I know I went to some meetings at 6 o'clock, and I think I was the only one there. But I just wanted to make mention that it really doesn't seem to make a difference what time it is. And somebody made a comment a couple of weeks ago that if you really have something you want to share or you want to hear, you're going to make an effort to be there. And it is only two days a month. It's not like it's five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Hang on, turning my video on. Hey, I just, I, I, I agree. In the past, it hasn't made a huge difference in how many people are able to attend. What I'm hearing from others. What I'm hearing from others is that they do want to come. They're not able to come. I think that I think the expectations have changed in recent times of, of how people participate and what's going on in their communities. And so we need to kind of roll with those changes, I think. And I wanted to talk about something at the last school board meeting, and I was late, and I missed my opportunity for public comment, which I mentioned in my email. So it, it, I made it to the meeting, but I missed those first crucial five minutes where I would have been able to speak. And, you know, I know it kind of sucks to be at a meeting late, but I'm gonna be at a meeting when I leave work, and I won't get home till 8 o'clock, and that's a sacrifice that I have to make to serve my community. So that's all. I'm, I'm done with public comment, so move on.
Are you? Dustin?
I, I think there's, there's some people that are, you know, misconstruing the, the idea. It's not really whether or not people are actually showing up to every single meeting. It's that we're listening and hearing people saying, no, you, you're, you're making this at a time that's inconvenient for the majority of people. And so we as a, you know, as a community should be saying, oh, well, we should be holding these open and transparent meetings at a time that is best for everybody. You know, whether or not they come, we're telling them, hey, we're here at the time that works for everybody, so that if you want to come, you can come and have your voice. Having it in the middle of the day is, is telling people that we don't want to hear your voice. So I, I think that's the difference that people need to take into account.
Thank you. Anyone else? Susan?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that it's also very hard for the general public to fully understand what's going on. The agenda, as someone else just pointed out, is very limited, you know, to a normal citizen and understanding the background, what it represents, the history of it, and so forth. And so by not being able to watch the meetings at a later point, if they can't attend, it's very hard to participate when you're not really sure what's going on. And it, it just, I guess I just mostly want to agree that there are people that want to participate, but it's very hard to when you first don't know fully what's going on, and you can't always make a physical meeting. Like, I can't come if the meetings are strictly in person. And so, you know, to automatically assume that by either changing the meeting or allowing for later viewing means that people aren't interested, that that isn't always the case. In fact, quite often that isn't the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion for approval of the minutes, please.
I want you to approve the minutes of the school board meeting, April 5th and April 8th, 2022, bearing any errors or omissions.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have one. I think there was one in there, the vote was two to three to two, with two people abstaining, so it should have been 3-0. We have this three to with two extensions. Should be 3-0, correct. That is on page 13 of 13 or 14, yeah. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Erica?
Workshop, I'm sorry, the budget workshop. I did ask if those ideas presented, the home ec teacher, industrial arts teacher, and APAD were the only ideas that were being presented, and could other ideas be talked about with this carryover of the budget money? It's not listed in the minutes. I'd like it to be.
Anything else? If not, all in favor with the changes that have been? Five votes? Have a motion for the payroll warrant, please.
I want to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer, each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in school payroll warrant, number 22-22, in the amount of $158,213.38 on April 24th, 2022, and main PERS number 22-10, in the amount of $37,353.66 on April 11th, 2022.
Second.
Show? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Five votes? Have a motion for the payable warrant, please.
Motion to move to direct superintendent of schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the school payable warrant, number 22-31, in the amount of $32,927.36, number 22-32, in the amount of $100,901.11 in SHS number 21, in the amount of $10,000 on April 21st, 2022.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Five votes? To see if the board will change May 13th, 2022 to an early release.
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
We have one question. How does it affect region students?
We provide transportation down there, so it wouldn't impact.
So they would, they wouldn't.
Yeah, what, this is traditionally been a half day because of the prom, and for whatever reason, which I don't know, the calendar was approved last year, it would be a full day. So it was brought to my attention to report to the board. Traditionally, it's been a half day, and we'll take care of the transportation region, so.
Is the prom onsite, or is it at the rubber drivers?
Saturday, re, January.
Is this an early release for just high school?
No, it would be district wide.
Any other discussion?
I didn't hear what, whether it be district wide or just the high school.
All in favor? Five votes? Discussion regarding in-person versus virtual school board meetings? Kevin?
Yeah, I think we're trying to get back to normal, as much as we can. So I think the in-person, but I'm not against having Zoom as well for the public. But I think we should. The, the only hesitation I have is, we're gonna have to, this is a big issue. We're gonna have to have live, or we're not gonna be able to do it in that conference room. It's way too small. But I, we're trying to get back to as normal as we can. Let's get back to normal.
I would like to say the same, because Kevin does echo the same sentiment, that it would be nice to get back to normal. You know, the, the schools are somewhat back to normal, and we have the basketball team here tonight. I think it's time to move forward and go back to in-person meetings, but I absolutely agree with keeping Zoom for those that can't make it here. For whatever reason, if they have kids at home, if they're at work, if they're unable to actually get here, if they have disability issues, like, I love that option. It definitely allows more of our public to participate. I agree as well, both options.
Do we want any more discussion? Okay, discussion regarding adding school board meeting Zoom recordings to YouTube.
I think the school is gonna let us use their, their channel or whatever.
Yeah, the school doesn't currently have it.
It would be.
Depending on the direction of the board, that could be created.
The offer was made at a March 10th, 10th town council meeting by the town manager to assist with that and put the videos all together in one spot, so people can access it right from the town website. And I think it's an awesome idea. It's being done already across the state by many school districts, because it allows the public, the parents, to be able to see a meeting they might have missed, or if they need to do some research and look something up, it's accessible to them. And not everybody is gonna look at minutes. They'd rather maybe watch a video if they're a visual learner. So I think it's an awesome idea, and it's 21st century. It's, it's a great option to have.
Well, I think we had to decide if we were going in-person or virtual, because if we were going all in-person, it would be no Zoom. So you wouldn't have to have it. So I, I think putting on that thing, as long as it's not, I know the town pays to have some video chat. What cost would it be to the school district? For a Zoom, it's just, the recordings would be uploaded, right?
Yeah, so if we do it on our own, have our own account, we can upload for free, post for free.
To YouTube?
Yes.
The only thing we want to be careful of is any executive session or anything that's not recorded. We actually can't make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay, the only complaint I have heard personally is not like the cat TV that we had. It's not on our local channel, that this is something that kind of goes worldwide. That was the only complaint that, you know, that I was told about by different people.
So if it goes worldwide, so does the newspaper. When they write articles about what we talk about here and what we vote on. So it's just giving, again, more information to the public in a very appropriate way. It'd be uploaded to our cloud and then put right onto the YouTube channel, just as town council already does.
I understand that.
Do you mind if I have one thing?
Go ahead.
I, I do know when we started Zooming for classes, there was considerable concern from our school union around being recorded and how they would be distributed, which resulted in a kind of an agreement back when COVID started, that those classes would not be, they'd be uploaded into Canvas and some of them, but they wouldn't be distributed any further than that, because there's a lot of concern about people wanting to feel comfortable to speak their piece and then in the classroom bit. So I do think there's going to be some concern regarding reviewing from this. Just food for thought.
What are we discussing? That's not public. That's not allowed to be heard by the public.
It's, it was, it was not necessarily, enough, there's nothing that's gonna be discussed unless it's an executive. It's, it was, it was not necessarily enough, there's nothing that's gonna be discussed unless it's an executive session. What I'm communicating with you was the comfort level of staff to communicate and knowing that that information is gonna be put out there on YouTube is different than the discussion with the folks sitting in the room or, you know, the few attendees we have. So that's what we're communicating to. It's a different level of comfort.
I see a hand raised, but I don't know if we're addressing the public.
Okay, discussion regarding adding a curriculum committee to the board committees.
I, I do have a question, just moving back. Are, are we actually gonna vote on any of this stuff to change? Because now we've talked about two things and, but we haven't made a decision.
Well, our agenda says discussion and.
We can make decisions here, right?
You can, somebody's gonna have to make a motion.
I will make a motion. I would like to make a motion back to number nine, that I would like to see the school board meetings move to in-person with Zoom as an option for our public.
So you got a motion and a second? On moving in-person and virtual forward, is that correct, Erica?
Yes.
Any more discussion on that one from anybody? All in favor? Order one. Now, do you want to make a motion on number ten also? School board meetings, Zoom recordings to YouTube?
I will make a motion to add school board meetings, including committee meetings, that are Zoom recorded to the town YouTube page.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Kevin?
We need releases signed to be put people's images up on a uh, a Zoom meeting. We do, anytime the students are gonna be involved, we have to get, yeah, I mean, we have some on file for students. So, you know, when we see, when you see us post pictures to Facebook and any type of public thing, that's done very intentionally with reviews by multiple people, make sure that we have permission. My next question would be, if there's somebody in the audience, they don't want it to be on the video, do they have to have a release to be able to use that video?
I think that might be a questionable legal, my, my understanding, I mean, if they're attending a public meeting, and this is the expectation set forth by the board, by them attending there, essentially, agreeing with the fact that it's gonna be posted elsewhere.
Is there any money involved?
Well, through the town, I have no idea. I can't answer that question.
It's completely free to upload to YouTube.
The town has all YouTube.
Yeah, she's saying right, it's. Anyway.
I know the school can get it for your YouTube account. I don't know what the town's gonna set up.
Austin?
Hi, I, I think we're, we're overlooking the fact that this is really no different than what we're doing today with Zoom. Right now, this, this meeting is being recorded, and there's nothing stopping somebody from uh, going through and, you know, Freedom of Information Act request for the meeting, and posting it themselves on YouTube. It's, it's a public meeting. There's, there's nothing to hide from, and there's no issue with it.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Hey, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, I just wanted to say that, to my knowledge, there's no cost.
You're muted, stuff to me.
I'm not very good on my phone, I'm sorry. Um, I don't think there's any cost to the town because it's either Peter or one of the counselors that's kind of running the Zoom, just, you know, letting people in. I don't think it would be any different. It would be set up just like this. And then, you know, you take the recording and you send it off and it gets uploaded. So I don't think there would be any really any changes on your end, except for just knowing that it's gonna happen. Um, that's all. And it's like everyone said, it's a, there's no expectation of privacy when you're in a public meeting, so. That's all.
Any other comments from the board? Seeing none, all in favor? Discussion adding a curriculum committee to the board.
So this was my request. Um, there's, like, there is language in the policy book in several sections that allow the board to um, research curriculum, recommend curriculum, approve curriculum, and evaluate curriculum. Um, it's an essential part of a school board at any school district in any state. And we currently do not have a curriculum committee. It doesn't have to be called that, but we don't have a committee that does this, that evaluates um, curriculum for the school. And I recommended that we have a discussion so we can add this committee and appoint people as soon as possible, so we can start having those meetings and um, having that discussion with our, with our staff.
Are we hire staff? That sets our curriculum. We have superintendent, we have principals. Speaking for myself as a school board member, I shouldn't be setting curriculum. I think it's presented to us, and that's where we have our vote, if we wanna do it or not. I think it's a job of the superintendent, the principals, and our scores that we're getting. If there needs to be a change, there'll be a change. So I don't think, I can't speak for everyone, but I know that I'm not qualified to be setting curriculum for these, these schools, period.
It is in our policy book. So if we.
It could be in our policy book, but it doesn't.
Policy, then we should be following policy. And I can read it to you, I have it wrote down. But that is something school boards do across the state and across the country. Is they talk about what the school needs, if they need stuff to be modernized, if they need new textbooks, if they need new um, software, if a new writing curriculum is recommended, a social emotional learning curriculum for the kids. It gets discussed, it gets talked about. And we, as a team, with the staff, with the administration, with the principals, we all work together to see that our kids are getting the best, most modern, up-to-date curriculum.
Well, I'm a teacher for twenty-six years. I would pick my own curriculum. Sure, the school would, but the school board or anyone could look at it and say, yeah, that's a good curriculum, and what do you need? And they always supplied me with what I need for books, for technology, which I taught technology, information technology, uh, never had a problem with the curriculum being uh, okay by the school board, or okay by the, the principal or, or director, in our case, of region three. However, I would be offended if someone, not offended, but I, I be remiss to think that someone that didn't know my curriculum tried to come in and change my curriculum. There's all kinds of curriculum out there, especially for what I was teaching. I picked my own curriculum, the school board okayed it on what I presented to them. They didn't try to change my curriculum, they didn't try to introduce new things to my curriculum. They didn't understand my curriculum. Uh, if they want to research it and everything, that is in the policy that they can research my curriculum, make suggestions. I, I understand that. As far as them deciding what my curriculum was, that didn't happen.
I'm not asking for a change or deciding. I'm saying it's, it's, it's a part of what we do. It's, it's, and being aware of what our teachers need and hearing the needs of the staff um, and discussing it and saying, okay, well, let's look into that. Let's see what we can do for you, especially when we have budget workshops where we have money to decide what we're gonna do. It would be really nice to know what the staff needs, and if we had curriculum meetings where we could have board members and Josh and any recommendations from staff coming forward, we could look into it and help them. But without it, how would we know what is needed? And how can we help as the school board if we don't know? And we're not meeting and talking about it in a committee. Again, this is a committee that most schools have on their school board.
Anyone else?
I'd like to. I think we'll get too much into micromanaging our administration. That we're here to make sure they're following our policies. And they present the curriculum. It almost seems like we're picking at everything that's done in this school. And it's micromanaging. I know there's three of us on the board that have jobs. I can't be much, you know, spending all my time trying to figure out what's going on in these schools. We find those out in these meetings. And the curriculum comes before us. That's what we'll have us say. Yes. Thank you all.
Michelle?
Well, so right now, like, we have, like, the building and grounds committee, and we have the information technology committee. We have a lot of committees. So, are, Eric, are you, like, talking about like, just having, like, when you set a building and grounds committee, you come to us, like, with what things?
Agenda items.
Agenda items. I mean, it basically would be the same thing with curriculum, right? Like, you know, so-and-so is proposing this, this, and this. We kind of talk about it. Then we bring it to the school board. And, and I kind of, because we have all.
I think typically what happens with curriculum, so we have evaluations and assessments we conduct with students throughout the course of the school year. And then we look back, and then we look at our curriculum and the implementation of our curriculum, right? We gotta implement the fidelity. And so those are the driving factors that lead to discussions with the staff. Okay, here's where we're falling down. How do we correct this and fix this? Like you've seen us do with iReady and some of those other pieces. So that is, is really a discussion between administration and the folks on the ground level, our educators that implement it. And then what happens is, if we're gonna move forward with adopting your curriculum or whatnot, we bring that forward to the school board to make, you know, the decision. They have the ultimate decision to make um, a curriculum and adopt your curriculum.
Right, and if, but if we don't know the background of that, and all the grunt work that's gone into it, and the evaluations and how they come out, and now we're just sitting in a board meeting, and we have an agenda item that says whether we're gonna select this curriculum or not, but we don't know all of that background, because we don't have committees to talk about it, then we're making a blind vote without information. So that's why those committees exist. Committees are where the grunt work gets done, where discussions happen and recommendations come forward to the board. If we don't have committees that are meeting regularly, how, how does anything get done? And it's not micromanaging, it's how schools work. It's how school boards work. And if we wanna see, you know, the momentum increasing and moving forward for our schools, then we have to put in the work. We all signed up here to put in the work.
Well, how is the curriculum decided now?
So what would happen is we would assess, evaluate, look at a curriculum to address inefficiency, and then it would come to the school board for the book.
So is that not the groundwork?
The grunt work is done at the teacher level. They're the ones that are evaluating and assessing the students.
The ones that know the curriculum the best.
Knows, and as well as the students.
But then we have to go down something that we don't know fully the background. We're just given a vote, a discussion, and then we, I mean, it just happens so quickly without really knowing what's going on. And I was a teacher too, Donnie, so I do understand exactly what you're saying, that we pick what's best for our kids. And we know what's best for our kids, because we went to college. But there is a piece that the school board has in this, that they're invested as well to know what's going on in the schools and if they can help, if there's, because they know the budget, and they're part of the budget decisions. And if they know, hey, there's a gap here with, um, let's say, reading, or there's a gap here with social emotional learning, they can say, yes, let's have a discussion. Let's meet as a committee and find something to fill that gap.
I think that discussion's already happening. I think this happened with the superintendent and the teachers, and anyone else involved in their curriculum. If they have a problem with their curriculum, or they're having trouble with the students, then they're gonna come forward to the superintendent, the first, first place. And if the superintendent's involved, that's where it's changed that up or whatever, then it comes to the board, and then we, we can, we'll have the information then to make that decision. I don't think we have to have a committee to look at their curriculum.
I know with the past two superintendents that I've worked with, usually before any new curriculum was purchased or anything like that, it was always presented to the board. At a board meeting, we're looking at this curriculum. Uh, so-and-so is trying it out and seeing how it's working. And you'll get a further update as time goes on. That's the way. And I don't know how Dr. McNamara's gonna do it. I mean, I haven't worked with him long enough to to know his style, but I do know with, with the other superintendents, that's, that's the way we did things. You know, we, it wasn't a, you know, you can call it, Erica, a blind vote. We knew this new math thing was coming up, I mean, and the new reading thing was coming up, specifically the iReady that we're using now. We knew about it, we knew it was in trial, and we had a chance to vote on it when when we got ready to purchase it. But we knew from the students, from the staff, and from the administration that this is what was happening.
Well, I, I guess I just wanna go on record saying that I think we need it, and if we want to continue forward momentum for our school district, then I think it's essential, but that's, that's all right, if you have another way.
Rebecca?
Thank you for recognizing me. Um, I just wanted to say, as somebody who's not in the school but is an interested member of the public and has, you know, people in the school, I would like to, it would be comforting for me to not just have the curriculum be brought to you guys and you guys approve, and we don't, as a public, know what curriculum is being used until after the fact. And if there was like some kind of committee, then we could see those minutes, and we could, from, you know, the parental standpoint, look those up and see what our children are learning. And certainly in this day and age, you kind of hear about all kinds of crazy stuff being taught in schools, and I have no fear about that currently in the school department, and I'm not putting that out there on you guys. But I do think that it would be nice for us to, as the public, have some more transparency and see what is being brought forward to be taught to the kids in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. So before we move off number eleven, is this gonna become a motion again? Nobody's gonna make a motion? Okay. End of discussion.
Oh, Mr. Bailey sets up the presentation.
We're at this, we're at.
Yes.
We're, we're gonna take a recess. We have Mr. Bailey here from the School Board Management Association. So he has a chance to set up.
Resource um, that uh, the, the school boards association uses by the way, to just help promote different kinds of things that are good for boards. And so these are packets for. And so these are packets for. In case you want to take notes.
Yeah, do it.
It's a little sideways to me.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Just a little, ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we have Steve Bailey today, who's executive director for the main school management association. So. We do have guests still attending virtually as well. So. Um, he's here to present a board workshop for us.
Thank you very much. I'm very glad to be here. Yes, Steve Bailey. And what's my timeframe, Dr.? Um. Yeah. Take half hour, is that? Um, how long do you need? Half hour be a little, I'd be talking really, really fast. Uh, forty-five minutes, sorry?
Forty-five is good.
Okay, that's good. And we'll make sure we hit the highlights with, with that, with that in mind. That's great. Good deal. Um, so, um, as a, as a board workshop, um, this is one of the trainings that, uh, main school management does. Uh, we, we like it when we can actually travel, uh, to school boards and meet and be with you in person. Uh, we have done this virtually as well, but we're very glad to be back, glad to be able to be in person also. We have done something like this, uh, virtually and, and did offer back in November, a board membership 101 that some people may have attended. Um, and then also we provide a different types of professional development too at our MSME Fall Conference, uh, which, uh, this next year is offered on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Of October. It will be in person this year back in Augusta. And we've been virtual the last two years. Um, what we found is that as, as people come onto boards, they get elected, they get appointed. Um, it's, it, it changes with every person who comes on because all of a sudden you've got a new board and. Um, people who have been on different types of boards before, and if you've never been on a school board, it's a separate, it's a special type of opportunity as well as a challenge in terms of being on a school board. Um, one of the reasons being that, um, statutes that, uh, apply to you are established by the state. Uh, they're not established by, uh, local communities. Um, and so you are, uh, an entity that's created through state statute. Uh, and so all school boards across, all public school boards across the state follow the same set of statutes. And so. But we are called upon from time to time to be able to come and then provide this type of an opportunity. Um, what I'd like to do tonight is just to make sure that, um, we have the opportunity, uh, both to present information. As well as to have you ask questions and within a forty-five minute timeframe, we want to make sure we get your questions answered, but also, you know, hit some highlights. Of, of information that is provided in the materials. So you have the packet of materials. Um, if we don't get through all of it, it's there for your use beyond, beyond today's meeting. Uh, the book that I gave to Warren and, and to the Dr. McNaughton, uh, that's a, that's a supplement as a support for the materials that are provided to you. Uh, we want you to have as much information as you, as you want, as well as need, like to be able to be, uh, a, a better board. And really what we're looking for in terms of boards is effective boards, uh, boards that work together as teams. You are what we consider the governance team of the Nolanaki School Department. Together with the superintendent, you become the leadership team of the school department. And so it's really important that you both know your roles, uh, as separate as they are. But also what it means in terms of you working together. So for tonight, um. Obviously, you're all from, um, Nolanaki, um, numbers of years on the board. And so is it Erica?
Oh, Michelle.
Michelle, Erica's here.
Yeah.
You have Michelle?
Um, I'm Michelle Burndred and I'm my second term.
Second term, okay. Uh, Kevin Gregory. I think this is my thirteenth year. Thirteenth year, Warren?
Twelve years.
Yeah. John, first year, first year. Erica?
Second month.
Second month. Okay. Wow. Welcome to you all. An important role for each of you in terms of, um, you know, what, what you have. On your left-hand side of the packet inside, uh, that brochure, you, you do have, uh, the slides that, uh, we'll operate from. We obviously won't get to all of them tonight, but that'll be our, my main focus for talking. On the right-hand side, there are handouts that we'll make reference to. Some of them are your own policies. Um, and then we have potentially other suggestions for you or the readings in there as well, uh, that I will, I will speak from and speak to. Yes, yes, for your information and just, uh, as a, as a, as a quick point, the tri-fold brochure that's on the left-hand side, it, it does, uh. On the inside demonstrate to you the nine different regions that we have in terms of the main school boards association. You're in region two, um, pancreas. Um, you have three different representatives, uh, on the main school boards association. You have Nikki Forrester from, um. Guilford. Uh, you have, uh, Mike Williams, who's from Green Bush, works up here in Dover Foxcroft, not too far down the road. And you also have, uh, Fay Anderson, who's from RSU twenty-two and him. So you, you do have three different people who, if you had questions or comments, uh, having to do with advocacy with regard to, uh. Uh, things that are going on in the legislature, uh, you certainly could call them up, uh, their contact information. Uh, it is, is, uh, not specifically in here, but you can find out if you go to their website to be able to get that information about them. So tonight, um. Purpose will be just to review the main statute where you get your authority as well as your responsibilities. Uh, talk about how, uh, we, we'd like to talk about, uh, boards as a team in terms of working together to be able to, uh, work for the benefit of the students in your district. This is a professional development opportunity. It shouldn't be the only one you have over the course of the school year, but it's one that we're able to bring together with you. And we hope that you will make other times within your, your school board agendas, uh, to think about other school board learning that would be of value to you as a board. Um, the other part really is to establish a strong, and what I'll call a collective understanding of what it means to be a school board member in terms of roles and responsibilities that are important for you. So with that, as, as I start, are there certain things that you hope, knowing that this was a, a scheduled, a, a training activity or, or, or board workshop presentation? Are there any specific things that you hope to either learn or ask questions about tonight that we would make sure that we get answered, um, as we go through this matures? We will wait time. Pause and see if you have anything that comes to mind. Okay, so it looks like I'll just kind of let it roll. I would ask, um, if there are things that come up as we talk about things, as we present things. If you have questions, you know, that's the time to ask them, you know, so that we can get it well, well, sort of in your mind as well. Um, so. You are the governing body for the Nolanaki School Department. You're given that authority and power through, uh, statutes that are found in twenty-eight in the statute book, um, subsection one zero zero one. There are twenty. Two sections now within that particular statute that provide for the, uh, different types of roles and responsibilities you have. Uh, you also back that up with a policy and I, I heard you talking about your policies and your policy committee before. But if you take a look on page, uh, on the handouts, pages one and two. Really identify, um, your roles and responsibilities as board members. Now, page two is the policy that you adopted and this was, um, last revisited, um, in two thousand and seven. Um, the original was, uh, nineteen ninety-six. But your policies, your powers and responsibilities, um, that's what you are really set forth to do as a board member. So number one is enact policy. Number two, letter B, select employee, evaluate the superintendent. Um, what I'd like to point out though, in terms of the second paragraph, uh, in the top part of that policy. The board shall concern itself primarily with broad questions of policy rather than with administrative details. The application of policies is an administrative task to be performed by the superintendent and his or her staff. Who shall be held responsible for the effective administration and supervision of the entire school system. So, um, that really identifies that you really have the responsibility of looking and, and helping guide the, the school district at what we call the thirty thousand foot level. The superintendent, the principal, uh, the other administrative staff, they're going to be more in the weeds and, and dealing with the day-to-day, month-to-month operation of the schools. And you really will be dealing at, at a board level as a governing board level, uh, at about a thirty thousand foot level. Now, if you go back to, uh, handout number one, um, these are seven different areas, uh, one eight, one through three, three A, four through six. They really speak about, uh, what's included within, um, the statute. Uh, the powers and duties of the school boards are normally set forth in state statutes and, or, and/or municipal charters. The most important functions of boards generally fall into the following categories: legislative and policymaking, educational program. Personnel employment, quasi judicial, budget finance, school facilities and communications with the public. So. Those are areas that, uh, you, you do have responsibility for. In many cases, you delegate them, uh, to the superintendent and the administrators should work for him. Uh, the other thing that I would say in both, in terms of, uh, handout number one and number two, you're one employee, you have one. Your one employee is the superintendent. The superintendent has the responsibility for teachers and for principals to nominate them to you, his, his recommendation to you. You have the authority and responsibility to either approve or not approve. If you approve, he then has the, uh, ability to be able to offer a contract to the person. So in, in essence, he's hiring, uh, the people through your, uh, approval of teachers and also principals. Now, it's possible, and I don't know if you do this or not here, but it, it's, it's possible that you also bring other support staff to the board, uh, for either. Information or for approval. Is it for information or is it? Okay. Yeah. So, um, as I said before, the superintendent, so you're one employee and so he's the person, in this case it's me. Um, he, he's the person that you supervise as five board members. You do evaluation of the superintendent. He's responsible for doing evaluations of all of the staff, uh, below, uh, the superintendent level. Any questions there? Okay. So just to go back to this last bullet, uh, up on the slide. Policies are really your, what we consider your own, as they, they're, they're really like, uh. Uh, what is you set as your kind of foundation and your base in terms of how you operate? In the absence of policy, the superintendent has the authority to be able to make decisions, uh, i- if something comes up that's not included within policy. If there are questions that come up though, there are two places you look first to be able to help find the answer. One is in policy in terms of what you decided and what words have helped you decide in prior years as well as the statute. Those are two places that you look. And then if you still need guidance in terms of where to go, that's where you call legal. In terms of identifying yours is something I've missed here, is there something else I should know in order to be able to help me make an informed decision? But you use your policies to be able to be your first guide. You look to the statute to be able to help support what action it is you want to be taking. And then you, you're able to make your decision in a much more informed way. That way, it's not, it, it helps create and develop some consistency as well as some general understanding in terms of how does the school system operate? Well, you operate with the system of policies that you have in place to be able to help guide that work. So just real quick, uh, on the right-hand side of your packet, there's a handout number four. Can you just take a quick peek at that? This goes to, um. Help identify roles of, of superintendent as well as roles of, of school board members. This is, uh, it's a quiz, but it's a, this really speaks to, um. What, what is it that the board should be doing? What is it that the superintendent should be doing? It, it should be near the front of, of the packet, okay? And I'd, I'd just ask you to take a look at the verbs that are there in, in these particular tasks. If you were to say approve mission, vision and goals, who does the approval? Is it the board or the superintendent?
That's in the board.
It's the board. Uh, decide to close school for a snow day or to be able to have a remote day, that's going to be the superintendent. Interview superintendent candidates. That's you as the board. Um, interview teacher candidates. Typically it's the superintendent, although I have seen some boards that might have a, a, a board member sit in on, on an interview committee. Uh, but they would not be, it wouldn't be the full board who'd be doing that. It would be an individual having the responsibility to, to represent the board. Approve policies, that'd be the board. Develop administrative, uh, procedures, that's going to be the superintendent. Um, evaluate staff, who does that?
Superintendent.
Superintendent. Evaluate the superintendent? Who just talked about that? You. Uh, approve budget.
School board.
School board. Develop strategic plan. Well, in that particular case, I would say it could be a combination of both. Because you'll want to have input from not only the superintendent, but from the administrators in terms of other people that will be helpful in identifying what's important within that strategic plan. But then what about administering the strategic plan? That's going to be the superintendent. Recommend student fees? Superintendent, approve student fees would be the board.
But it's a student fee.
Uh, it, it could be, um, lunch prices.
Okay.
Could be fees to games. Those types of things.
So if, if it's recommended by the superintendent. Then approved by the board, what, what's our role in there? What are you looking at?
To have conversation. I mean, if it's a recommend, I mean, basically, yes, that's, that's a recommend, but you can have discussion about that and you could raise it, you could lower it, uh, you can say. Uh, just like any other motion that would be made. I mean, there's, there's a, there's an informed decision-making process in terms of what the recommendation is and why it's there. Then you have conversation about it and you have other information that would lend itself to making that decision and then you go ahead and make the decision. Yeah. Handle complaints regarding schools or staff. Yeah, that's the one where you want to make sure that you weren't the lightning rod for concerns and complaints coming to you because you may have to hear that one. After it comes all the way through the channel of, uh, the, the light of concerns, the, uh, uh, hierarchy of. After it comes all the way through the channel of, uh, the, the light of concerns, the, uh, uh, hierarchy of, of, of concerns. In terms of chain of command. Um, there is a chain of command and, and, um, I'm going to look real quick, there should be a policy KE. Look real quick in the, in the back of your, uh, actually should be on the table. Yes, uh, number 17, public concerns and complaints. You have a process in place for if something comes up and you hear about it. That's the time that you would, you would make note of that to the board chair and also to the superintendent and say, I've had this communicated to me. I just want to make sure that I'm doing my duty as a board member to let you know that I've, I've heard this and, um. Uh, wha- what you then would do is, is also, uh, after being a very good listener. Uh, try to redirect the person who's expressed the concern to you to go back to, if it's in a classroom, to go back and, and have a conversation with the teacher. Or maybe if there's, at the school level, so it may be to the principal. It may be at a transportation level, so it may be with the, uh, a transportation supervisor. Or somebody having to do with, with that, yes, Eric.
I have a question with the public concerns and complaints that we're talking about. How do you suggest as a board member, if a member of a public comes to you and says, I have a complaint or a suggestion? How do we have that discussion or take it forward to the next step? What do you recommend?
In that particular case, yes, listen via, you know, both a polite, respectful, you know, caring listener. But indicate to them also that you as an individual board member, you have no authority to be able to, to change that or make it better or, or help, help with that. Or even be the advocate for that person moving them forward, moving it forward. What you can do is say, okay, I, I have heard you and I, I will share the information, you know, with the superintendent. Um, and then also be proactive in saying, okay, have you, and ask, have you talked with the, uh, the, it, it, let's say it's, it's, uh, with a, uh. A parent's child, you know, in, in a school, have you talked with, you know, the child's teacher? Um, have you had a chance to be able to move this to the next level of superintendent? You could even, you know, point out, uh, your policy KE in terms of, uh, recommending that they become familiar with the chain of command process to be able to, uh, work it through. So the intent is you're trying to have it resolved at the lowest possible level. Um, you as a school board are only going to be making that decision after it's gone to the teacher, the, the principal, the superintendent. And then if at all it needs to, then it would come to a board level for all five of you to consider. And in many cases, if it's a, if it's of a sensitive nature, that would be decided in, uh, in the executive session so that, uh, you're protecting the privacy and then the, uh, reputation of the individuals involved. Does that help at all?
I have a question. So if you, if you get too involved and it comes before the board. You have to recuse yourself because you're involved with the thing, so you wouldn't even have a vote on it at the end.
If, if, if it has something to do, if it, if it would have to do with the dismissal or discharge of, of a staff member for sure. And that's the other thing where you want to be able to hear and enough to know what the situation is to be able to say, you could be able to help redirect the person. But then you don't want to become so involved that, uh, um, you, you, you don't have a, an unbiased mind, you know, to be able to, uh, come to a decision-making opportunity. Because you are supposed to be able to come to the table, you know, with an open mind, having the opportunity at the table to be able to hear other information that might sway you one way or the other. Because, uh, you're, you're getting all the information or all the facts here and, uh, not, um, being biased in terms of how you make your decision before you get there. So that's, that's a very good point, Kevin, in terms of not getting too involved, uh, so that you, uh, are the advocate for the person you're bringing the concern or the complaint, uh, to, to whoever they're, they're going to next. Okay. 15 was determine amount of money for teaching supplies. I would say this is a dual role. It's, uh, on a day-to-day basis, uh, after the budget's been approved, it's going to be the superintendent, principal and the building administrators. However, in the budget development process, you as a board have a responsibility of identifying and ultimately determining what the, uh, cost set or amounts are within your relevant categories. So within your, uh, instructional support category, um, you're going to have a certain amount, you know, for, for teaching supplies or it might be a line item within that entire category. And so you, you might have a conversation, you know, are, are, are teachers having enough, uh, supplies to be able to do the work they want to be doing. So you, you'd have a voice in determining that particular level. So it's kind of dual. And then obviously you employ superintendent. You guys, it, it, it's your, like you said, it's your one, it's your one. Hi. Okay, um, go back to slides for a little bit of a minute. You campaign or you're appointed, you come onto the board as an individual. Um, you have your own thoughts in terms of what it is you want to accomplish while you're a board member, but once you get onto the board. You're a member of one of five people and so you only have authority when you're meeting together as a board. When you're together here within an officially called meeting. And that's, that's key. Um, you have no other, uh, authority, uh, as an individual board member when you're outside an officially called meeting. Whether that be a workshop meeting, a special meeting, uh, regular meeting, um, an executive session. Um, those are all times when you're together at an officially called, called board meeting. Uh, even when you're at a committee meeting, let's say you're, are, you're, you're two people because you can't have, uh, three on a committee. Because that would be a quorum in terms of being on a committee together. Um, you, you really don't have any authority for the board because, uh, you're, you're not there together as a, an officially called full board meeting. Um, so keeping that in mind is really, really important because, uh, as people come to you, you can't promise anything and you have no individual authority, uh. Other than to listen to them and, and kind of use that as information in your, your decision-making process. So we, we say that your success as a board member individually is tied to the success of a board in terms of how well, how well you work together.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
When it comes to CTE. Or we, we all have the right to be on that committee. Does that, does that problem?
It's their committee, it's not your committee and it's their meeting, it's called for their meeting. Now, do you all sit on that committee?
Uh, three of us do.
Okay, um, in that particular, you, you, you're representing their board, so you're, you're not there as the Millenock School Board going to their meeting. Uh, you, you, you are as individuals going to that meeting, so. If you're okay there. Um, don't, just as a repeat, no authority except when acting as part of the majority of the board. So it takes three votes to be able to have a majority of the vote, have a majority of the board. Um. This is an important one too because, um. You represent the Millenock School Department, you're the advocates for these students, they really are your constituents. And even though you're, you're voted onto the board by, uh, people who can vote. Um, it's really the interest of the students that you have i- in your best interest to be able to, um, think about what's in the best interest of the organization. So. It's really a filter that you have to develop as a board member in terms of who do you represent when you're here? I have seen and, and, and actually experienced, you know, some people who are, who get voted on and think they are an assistant selectman or assistant city councilor. And that they're, you know, one aim is to, you know, keep the budget low. Well, that's counter to what the school boards together for and thinking about, okay, what's in, in the best interest of students. Now, you have that on one hand in terms of what's in the best interest of students, but you also have what's the fiscal capability of a town to be able to support, you know, what you can do as a, as a, as a city, as a town. And so you have to weigh those two things, but you, you never can lose sight of, you know, what you're here for. And that's for providing you the best, uh, quality education you can for your students. So that's where those two things come together. You're going to hear people, you're going to listen to people, um, but really when you, when you put all that information together, uh, you're going to do what's best and vote on behalf of the best overall interest of the organization. And the organization is Millenock School Department. So that's why you're here. And I say to folks, if, if you can't be here and if you can't advocate for kids and for the students of your school department, who's going to? Because, uh, you know what's needed, you know, within the school department. You have information that's presented to you from a variety of sources. And you have to make decisions, you have to weigh decisions based on what you feel is in the best interest of the school department. Taking all of the different aspects of what, what it takes to be able to operate the school department in that particular way. So that's, that's again, one of those roles and responsibilities things. Um, moving on to, um, board and superintendent roles. We, we do try to separate these because even in statute, they are, are separated in terms of what you as a board do and, uh, what, uh, the superintendent does. And. Coming down to the bottom. I think that's the most important part of this particular slide is the communication that can happen as well as the trust becomes developed as a, as a result of that communication. And so the communication happens in a variety of ways. Um, and I think about that right-hand side of the slide in terms of the superintendent dealing with objectives, action plans, regulations, procedures, really trying to respond to the question of how. And how, in terms of the means of how it's going to be getting done, asking the questions of how, when, where and by whom. So that he can make a recommendation to you. And then if you go to the left-hand side of that slide, it shows the board being concerned with vision, mission goals, policies. Uh, and also the end results. What's it going to look like when we actually take this action? What's it going to look like when we take this vote and we, we try to move things forward with the board? You're should, you should be concerned with what, why and how much. And also you then upon a recommendation from the superintendent would take a vote. After that vote's taken, the superintendent then would take that information and go back and implement. So much like it is with, uh, the principal and teacher nominations where he nominates, you approve, and then he can then go higher. In this particular instance, he recommends you vote and then implementation occurs following, following the vote. So it's really like a back and forth process. And in order for that to happen, uh, there has to be enough commu- communication, it has to be enough information for you to have to be an informed member of the board. To feel, to feel as if I can vote with confidence in terms of my position based on the information I have. So with that said, I would, I would want to make sure that, uh, you're having information, uh, in. I- in an advance notice, uh, method. So that you're getting information soon enough to be able to both read and explore and ask questions of the superintendent or the board chair. If you, if you have questions about any of the materials, any of the packet information before the meeting so that you have confidence there at the meeting. Or to be able to have a con- a conversation about the item when you actually, you get to the, uh, table to have your, your discussions, uh, about your agenda items. Um, the other thing that I would recommend, and I, I couldn't tell enough in terms of, like, tonight's meeting. But we also recommend in terms of, uh, robust rules and parliamentary procedure that you make the motion, you have the second, and then you start your discussion about what the item is. So that you know what you're having the discussion about. Now, the three items that were on there tonight that were, it was intended for discussion. I mean, it, it allowed for a motion to happen afterwards, but it wasn't necessarily intended that there was going to be, at least I couldn't tell from the agenda whether or not that was going to be a, a decision item tonight or whether it was just going to be discussion. So, you know, that's, that's something that really, you know, is, is more about, uh, agenda design. But my, my point in talking about this here is that, um, you have enough information and make sure that you, you, uh, voice your opinion during the time you have for deliberation after the motion and after the second's made. Um, I also would say that, um, if you don't express your opinion during that time, that silence is consent. And that, uh, you, it, it's, it's your own fault, uh, if you didn't say anything during the deliberation of the meeting and then the vote happens and you go home afterward to say, I wish I should have said such and such. Or I, um, you know, this would have been the time for me to say such and such and I'm, I'm, I'm really not happy that I didn't have a chance to express my opinion. You want to in, inform the board, you also want to be good listeners. You want to be good listeners to your other board's members. Uh, because they may have information that you might not have considered in making the decision, uh, so that you can move forward together in a, in a most informed way. Um, so. Any questions about this particular roles, roles of the superintendent, roles of the board?
Yes, Josh.
Can I ask one clarify, excuse me, clarifying question? When it comes to discussions versus motions on the board agenda you just mentioned. I know traditionally, so I've been involved in this district for a little while now, um, what has happened is there's been a discussion at the board level. And then after that, based on the discussion, the superintendent comes up with the how and where, why, and then comes back in the next meeting, makes a recommendation on the discussion. But seeing tonight that there was some action wanted to happen immediately, what is your recommendation for future items like that?
I think it all depends on readiness of the board. I mean, like tonight, it was apparent that there was some, some interest in some movement, you know, to be able to move forward with those. Um, however, uh, from the, from the preparation of an agenda point of view, um, you know, where that was presented, it was a public agenda. Um, you know, people might've been surprised that, um, you know, a, a vote was taken, you know, after, uh, the item on the agenda, you know, was in, indicated as, as discussion. So what you described before, I think, you know, would be a, a more prudent approach to take in terms of if people expect, well, this was just going to be talked about tonight. I didn't expect, you know, a decision to be made about such and such. Uh, then that allows for your kind of, uh, you know, public, uh, information, you know, to be shared and maybe just, uh, the seemingness of, uh, a little more openness of, of intent. And that's kind of an off-the-cuff response to, you know, I appreciate that, what we saw tonight, yeah. There is a communications tool that, uh, uh, can be used, uh, this is a communications agreement. And again, it kind of identifies and sets up, this is page seven of your handouts. It really kind of sets up, okay, what does the school board ex- expect from the superintendent? Um, you know, what would be valuable to be able to have the level of communication needed and desired by you? And please note at the bottom of that, number eight for the top part of that is no surprises. You as a board and you, and, and Josh is a superintendent, Dr. Martin is a superintendent. Don't want to come to a board meeting and all of a sudden have something be thrown at them that, you know, was, was out of the blue. You as a board want to feel as if, as well as think that you have information to be able to make decisions. And if, if Dr. Martin comes and, and if you take a look at the bottom of his. Uh, the superintendent expects no surprises, the board expects no surprises. So that's where that level of trust comes in. Where, um, if, if you're going to, uh, be ready to have something be discussed that you know about it, that you, you, you talk about it at least, you know, at a point and say, okay, we're going in, in this direction. If he has information that he wants to share with you at a board meeting, um, he's going to put that either in a packet. Or he's going to have some other level of conversation with you at committee level or just put out information to you in, in general as, uh, FYI information for you to be able to see. Um, but really protect yourselves, protect your, your roles, uh, by, uh, trying to, uh, uphold this no surprise rule. And as board members, you can help hold each other accountable by saying, you know, to someone else, if, if they bring that up, saying, you know, we, we agreed that we weren't going to have surprises. Um, you know, that this is not something we're ready to talk about yet. If we want to bring this forward, you know, as another agenda item at a future meeting, we can do that. But, uh, now is not the time to bring it up, you know, we don't have the information to be ready to be able to have that, that level of conversation. So that's the kind of thing that I would, I would recommend. Now, this was from somebody else, uh, different district, um, and obviously you can alter it in terms of, uh, uh, what the school committee expects or what the superintendent expects. But, uh, it is something that I offer as a, this is suggested communication tool that might be helpful. I have it in word form if you want to be able to, to use that for. So, um. You talked about the superintendent. Policy, yes. Just to go back quickly, the, um, you know, go back to slide. Superintendent board relationship, that policy is your BDD, it's, it's a handout number five. Um, it really does speak to the delegation, uh, that the board. Provides to the superintendent, providing freedom for the superintendent to manage the schools with the board's policies and frees the board to devote time to policymaking and appraisal functions. Now, uh, appraisal functions really are, hey, how are we doing? And so when, when staff brings to you information about assessments, when, uh, staff brings to you, uh, information on student performance or you're looking at facility needs. Or you're looking at, uh, transportation needs, those are appraisal, uh, efforts that the board would actually, uh, do. Um, and then obviously otherwise we type with the policy. But the superintendent. But the superintendent is held responsible by the board for the administration of its policies. Execution of board decisions and the operation of the internal machinery designed to serve the school program and for keeping the board informed about. School operations and problems. So that's where that communication piece comes to you again, and again, very important. The next slide really speaks to what we call for you as board members. Your job description. So this really speaks to the code of ethics of a school board member. Now, these code of ethics are very similar from school district to school district. Most boards have adopted in part, recommendation as a sample policy from the Maine School Boards Association. This particular member's code of ethics really speaks to what it is that. You will try to live up to as a board member. So there's a whole series of I-will statements. Obviously, this is an opportunity for you to serve your community, state, and nation because you believe public education to this means to promote the welfare of our people and to preserve our democratic way of life. That's why schools exist. However, letter V says, I will at all times think of students first and base my decisions on how they will affect students, their education, and their training. So there's where students come first. There are some other things here too that I think are important as team members. Letter E. So let's go to D first. I'll remember at all times that as an individual, I have no legal authority outside the meeting of the board and I will conduct my relationship with the school staff, the local citizenry. And all media communications on the basis of this fact. So again, no authority as an individual, only authority as a board when you're acting together. And meeting together as a board. Letter E, I'll recognize that my responsibility is not to operate the schools, but to see that they are well operated. I will seek to provide education for all students in the community commensurate with their needs and abilities. Letter H, I will support a decision made by the majority of the board graciously. So in a three to two vote, that's still the will of the board. That's the vote of the board. And you have your opportunity within the discussion, within the deliberation after the motion and second to try to influence others in terms of the way you're thinking and. Information you bring to the conversation. However, once the vote's made, that's the vote. And it's not the intent or the desire or the need or the charge of those people who didn't. Vote in the affirmative to sabotage that vote after the votes were made. And when asked by others about the vote, you can tell them how you voted. I mean, the meetings are recorded and people do have access to that information. They would have seen it on screen or if they were here in person. So they're gonna know how you voted. And you said, you can say, well, that isn't the way I voted and no, I didn't vote to support that, but that was the will of the board and that's the action we're taking. And that's the direction that the board's going. So that's what school board action is like in terms of how decisions are made, you know, with regard to things that you do as boards. J is an important one, and this goes back to the conversation we had before. I'll make decisions openly after all facts bearing on a question. Have been presented and discussed. Which means, you know, don't come to the board meeting with your mind made up in terms of if there's gonna be information shared that. Is important to the conversation and deliberation. So, you know, that's equally important. So the others on here, you continue to support that collective collaborative role and then I do see here, and I don't see them here tonight, but. I do see student, school board representatives. Do you, have you had them or do you have? And. Do the lights come on like one bank at a time? We have, like maybe one bank all at once?
Sure.
You have about ten more minutes, Josh?
Yeah, you can take longer if you need, okay?
So ethics, that's fine, that's good. Thank you. Ethics in practice. Represent the entire district when making decisions. You know, think about what's good for all the students, you know, all your facilities. Understand the role of the board in terms of you as what your responsibilities are. Encourage an open exchange of ideas and sometimes you do that by asking questions. Seek regular communications. And that would be if you're not getting them, you know, see if they can come, you know, from the superintendent, from the superintendent's office. Work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner and then avoid their conflicts of interest. Mostly that speaks to thinking about financial decisions that are made and. Decisions that are made that might financially benefit you. You don't wanna put yourself in the situation of making a decision on the board that would. Bring financial gain to your family. So you just have to be aware of that when decisions are made. Now, I do have a question in terms of. I've been to many board meetings that have been set up differently because of COVID and because of how they've operated within spaces. I was at one board meeting when there were fourteen different board members and they were set up across in front of the auditorium stage. And so from one end to the other, it might have been sixty feet. They were operating with microphones. But they couldn't see each other as they were talking to each other and the superintendent was down one end and the. Recording secretary was up the other end. And I just asked, I mean, just coming tonight, I see this, board meetings are for the board to do its business. And for the board to do its business, you know, sometimes it's nice, I mean, you're talking to each other. You know, as you're doing your board's business. So my question is, do you always set up this way? Or are you in a horseshoe type situation normally?
Yeah, we did the basketball presentations earlier before we arrived, so that's why we're setting, but we usually sit in a horseshoe, and we do it in the conference room.
So you can see each other, so you're talking to one another, asking questions of one another, you know, which I think is. Is a nice way to be doing it because, I mean, as decision makers, you wanna engage each other in relationships, you know, of the board to be able to. Figure out what it is you're thinking. So, good, thank you. That was more just for my own clarification. The board chair does have a different relationship with the superintendent out of necessity. Part of that is because of the planning that's necessary in terms of going into making the agendas as well as determining what's gonna be there by policy. You'd see a superintendent and chair that set the agenda, and so that's important. But they're the planner, they're the organizer. Spokesperson for the board, delegator, liaison, and confidant. As well as a guide for new board members and also the caretaker of relationships. So. Especially in the times that we've seen over the last two years, it's really important for new members coming on, for the board chair to. Take a little more effort to be able to make sure the board, the new board members come on. And can feel, you know, part of a team, part of, you know, what the intent and the mission of the board is to be able to support all aspects of the school. So. So duties, assistant superintendent in the preparation of the meeting agendas, chair of the meetings, assistant setting schedule for meetings, and unless otherwise, it's official spokesperson of the state committee. Also really important. Sometimes you can use consent agendas if there are certain things that will make the meeting go more efficiently. I didn't see it tonight on tonight's agenda, but I do know some boards have what they call a board forum or a general comments by members. I think that's, that's. You have to be really careful about that because then it's kind of open season in terms of what board members might share and again, that would. You know, oftentimes it might violate the no surprises rule too, so I'd be very cautious about that. Be careful about indicating action items versus information items. Sometimes, I mean, that was kind of shown tonight. Adding to the items to the agenda the night of the meeting may be allowed, but still a bad idea. I think there in terms of transparency, it's best if you know what's gonna be on the agenda. And it's possible that you might need to revise an agenda, but that also should be shared in the public so that they. Have an understanding of what's gonna be taken up and discussed at a meeting. Real important for board members as well as for superintendent, yes, I would say, no, you're late, you know where the guardrails are. In terms of recognizing the responsibilities not to operate the schools, but to see that they're well operated. And I had to leave at the time that the last item was being discussed in terms, and I don't wanna stick my nose into. Was there a decision made about the curriculum committee? You may have a policy on. Curriculum selection and. Of instruction and library materials, and you also may have a policy on curriculum selection. Number one, I go back to that policy. Number two. What I would say is, I've seen boards operate in a couple of different ways and they were both discussed tonight. I've seen many that operate how you're currently operating in terms of the, what you can still consider to be the experts. You know, within the field being utilized to help guide the development of curriculum and to bring it to the board for approval. I've also seen some larger boards have a variety of committees, and so that would be where I'd ask you, what are the committees that you currently? What are the committees of the board that you currently have?
We have the technology, we have buildings and grounds, we have negotiations. Policy, drop-off committee. Drop-off committee.
Yeah, and those committees of the board, and you also have other people who sit on those committees?
So how they're functioning right now, is there, each of them have two members from the board. And then myself, and I'm the one that creates the agenda for the meetings, and then we invite folks as needed, so let's say facilities and grounds, obviously. Our person will join us for that discussion, or if it pertains specifically to one building. The principal would be invited or some of the staff in given situations.
So the, one of the questions I had was, you know, what's the capacity of the board, you know, to have another committee? And then, you know, if it's functioning well now, you know, is there a need to fix it? But if there were a curriculum committee, then it would function much like the other committees where if you have two board members on it. You probably would have other people in addition to Dr. McNaughton, you know, school staff, you know, building principal. Have other people who would be able to help inform the conversation so that. The recommendation that would come from that policy would come back to you as a full board because it's not the committee that's making the decision. It would be the full board that would still need to make the. They'd make a recommendation and the decision would be made by the full board.
I have a question, if the two members don't agree in committee, is there a recommendation?
There's not.
Okay.
Yeah. Because, I mean, you have to have a majority and in that case, you know, it's too easy to have a recommendation coming forward to you to the board.
So we just send it back to the policy committee? Or if there's not a recommendation?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And that would be with whatever committee, it could be facilities or whether it be a policy or whatever. Which is kind of a fail-safe too in terms of, you know, you need to be able to have support for it to be able to come to the full board. Yeah. So that speaks a little bit to, you know, what board roles are in that particular capacity. Sometimes boards make mistakes, sometimes it's unintentional, not understanding what the chair's role is, allowing surprises, you wanna be real careful about that. And not supporting the decisions of the board. And we talked about that in terms of how. Unfortunate it is that, you know, when board members yourselves, you know, sabotage the decision of the board. Forgetting to demand proper respective protocol by all board members at all times. I mean. You volunteer your time to come here. It's important that you try to work together well with each other to be able to make decisions in a very productive way for. The best interest of students. And then also forgetting the conduct of the board during meetings, you send messages to the public. I mean, you are being viewed, you know, by public, either if they're here or they're on the screen. And, you know, when you send a message that you're working well together, not necessarily that you're agreeing a hundred percent all the time, but you're treating each other with respect, that you're. Inviting inquiry, that you're asking questions of each other, and then you're making decisions and. After the decision has been made, you're respecting that the decision, you know, was what was. In the best interest of the students at the time with the information that you had. And you never have all the information and you're always making information, I mean, decisions based on what it is that you have at the time. And you wanna try to collect as much information as you can, but there are times that you just have to go ahead and make that decision. And, you know, people may not be happy with it, but that's what you had to make the decision with at the time, and so you move on from there.
I have a question, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Like you said, the board chair and the superintendent in contact every day, and I was, how much information should. The chairman be in share with the rest of us?
But it really depends there in terms of is this information that's going to be, you know, shared that's gonna be needed by the board to be able to make decisions on the board? Now, I mean, the board chair is not gonna be relaying every single conversation that you have, you know, with the superintendent. But if it's needed to be able to make decisions, if it's information that. The board chair and the superintendent feel that all board members should have is information so that they don't get surprised. Because that's the other thing, I mean, you have a responsibility to them to make sure that they don't get surprised. Because they don't wanna be out in public and have some other member of the public come up to them and say. I found out about this, you know, what can you tell, can you tell me about this? And they say, well, I haven't heard anything about it. And even then, they may not be able to say anything based on, you know, what the kind of information is that's shared. But still, you wanna make sure that other board members are informed, you know, so that they don't get caught short in terms of the community.
And what bothers me, it's happened in the past, let's say, is we have all kinds of discussions. And then they all want to vote against it as the board chairman, so he knows something that we don't know. That bothers me if he's making a decision other than what the discussion was. You don't have all the information.
And they may have all the information, but their point of view may be different.
Okay.
You know, based on, and I guess I saw one of them tonight, in terms of, you know, the personal preference may have been, or what he heard from other people around that particular item. It might have been different, you know, based on what the other four people were. But it's still his responsibility, he doesn't have any more authority than you do in terms of your votes. It would be his responsibility to uphold, you know, what the vote of the board was, you know, which was, you know, a four to one vote tonight. Maybe different, you know, there are other circumstances, but. I mean, everybody has, you have your own ability to make your decision in terms of how you're gonna cast your vote. And you're using a lot of different kinds of information to be able to make that decision. Yeah. And. Truth be told, I was a superintendent as well, and I would have had, you know, board chair, a conversation with the board chair. Ahead of time and the board chair would have been aware of what my thoughts might have been, and I might have said it, you know, at a meeting. And so the board chair might have agreed with me and the rest of the board said no. But, you know, that's democracy in action too as it relates to, you know, school board level. So often, school boards in conflict, board members not sitting in their lane. Forgetting that individual members, including chairs, have no authority, individual agendas, disregard for proper meeting protocol. All important things. Email's an important one, the use of social media is an important one. Just making sure that you as board members, you represent yourself positively as a board and don't post things that will bring a negative response back. To the school district or to you as board members. The other thing is you can't use email as a decision-making tool. Decisions have to be made in the public through the Rights to Know Act, the Freedom of Information Act. Decisions have to be made in the public. You also need to make sure that you're being very careful of information that you share in emails, that you not include staff members or student names. Keep that kind of information out of any communications that you send. And also note too that information that is shared through social media, and I would include email, Twitter, Facebook. Any of the social media. any, any of the, your social media platforms, that that is accessible through a Freedom of Access Act request. And even if it's your personal account, it still can be requested for you to go through and check to see if there are any communications having to do with that particular topic. So just remember that any communication is not safe, that most all of them can be recovered, even if you deleted them. And so you just need to be very cautious of what it is you include as it relates to the, a school business. There are several different articles in your, in your handbooks on the right-hand side that, that do deal with, with social media. In terms of trust with the community, one of the slides we talked about back before and it was between the superintendent and the, and the school board, in terms of that communication and trust. The same thing is true with the community. How you conduct yourself here in the public eye goes a long way determining your credibility and support from the community. If they see you as a, a well-oiled machine in terms of, you may not agree all the time, but you're treating each other respectfully, that you're making hard decisions, but again, you're, you're, you're treating each other with respect. That you, you're gonna gain that level of, of support, keep that level of support in the community. So that's, that's something also to consider as, as you work together. We talked about public concerns and complaints, that was number seventeen, that complaints and concerns policy that you already have in place here. And handling those concerns, and this goes Erica to, to repeating that, what do you do? Ask he or she, then discuss the issue with the person to be the responsible. Express appreciation to be, for presenting the concern. Encourage the person to follow the established process. And then you make them available, make them aware of the concerns and complaint policy or your policy. Public participation has changed over the last three years. And this is something that there needs to be provided on the agenda. At every meeting that you have, it's a full board meeting. So that means a workshop meeting, a special meeting, regular board meeting. Those are all board meetings that are full meetings of the board where on the agenda, there needs to be a, a period of a public comment. You can determine whether that's at the beginning, you can determine if it's at the end. You also can determine if you want, and as I saw tonight during some of the agenda items where you even called on people within the public to see because they had their hand raised on a particular agenda item. That encourages and provides opportunities for the public to be involved in the, in the conversations you have. But just try to remember that board meetings are, are created for the board to be able to do the work of the board. And so you don't want, your board meetings are not a meeting of the public. And it's not a public forum every time you have a board meeting. But there are times when you wanna seek public input and a part of that is during your public comment period or if you allow it during a discussion of individual items on the agenda. And depending upon what the, what the give and take is that night of the board, that's, that's, you know, something you can determine at the time. I, I don't know, and I wasn't here at the beginning, but is there some type of public comment script that you read at the beginning of each meeting? And that's in here too, is, is just as a recommendation if you didn't have it. But that certainly has become helpful on the last year and a half, two years. You know, as, as people have become more active and more actively involved in the public comment period. The one last thing that I would, I would recommend that you as a board undertake a level of, of self-evaluation. We do have a sample policy in here, but just as you do an evaluation of the superintendent and you would ask the superintendent to do a self-evaluation in terms of how things going and what would you see as, as helping to improve what we have here within the district. It's important too for boards to do the same thing. You know, how are you as a board working together to be, to accomplish the goals that you've set in place? So this is a policy. B A, B D A B, it's near the back, I think it's twenty. Twenty-one, school board self-evaluation. On the back of that policy, it lists letters A to M, different things that the board could consider to review yourself. And typically, we try to recommend this happen at a retreat or some other type of summertime meeting where you've got a lighter agenda maybe, where you might have asked the board to complete a self-evaluation. And we, we often use Survey Monkey or something like that to be able to generate a response, you know, by each member of the board. I, I've seen it where the superintendent has led this discussion, but I've also seen it and it probably could work better if you even get somebody else to come in and facilitate that meeting so the superintendent can participate in the conversation as well. But just, just to get a handle on, you know, how are we doing as it relates to, let's say, board superintendent relationships? How are we doing in terms of oversight of curriculum and instruction? How are we doing in terms of fiscal oversight and resource allocation? You may choose some things, not this whole list, but you know, certain numbers of things that you'd like to have some information on so that you could work to the improvement of the board and the efficiency of the board. So that, that's one of the things that I might recommend that you consider, you know, for the policy committee to take a look at and maybe recommend to the board, we'd be glad to help you with any type of, of format of a, of a survey if you'd like to consider that for, for future action. So what questions have I left unanswered? Anything else for tonight? Then if I could, could I get you to, on the left-hand side of your packet, if there was a single sheet, it was just a single Wow. Do you just kind of fill it in for me? That would help me in terms of how this went tonight as well as what we could do to improve ourselves as we do this another time.
Dr. McNaughton?
Yes.
When you go into executive session, do you want me to make the conference room the host?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, we're recording.
I need a motion to go into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We're going into executive session. Is he going into a waiting room? Okay, thank you.
Yep, the motion is to approve the contract for Luis de Frederico as submitted.
So.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Five oh. I don't care.